Good morning, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. Also in attendance are committee members, Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen from the First District.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District.
Thank you, sir.
Vice President Sharon Middleton is skews, Councilwoman for the support is skews. I think Councilman Torrance should be on the call soon. From the City Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From the Mayor's Office, we have Sophia, but I'm not going to chop up Sophia's name, so I'm gonna let her say her last name.
Mr. Chair, Sophia Gubber Hewitt.
Thank you very much. And the committee staff person is the one of them, Laura Recar. This is Baltimore City Recreation Parks 2025 Strategic Plan for the purpose inviting Director of Department of Recreation Parks to update the City Council on the implementation of Department's REC 2025 Strategic Plan. Quick. I just had some open remarks. Society has come a long way to recognize trauma as a recause of physical illness, emotional instability, and even violence. There are numerous articles and writings about the importance of health and wellness in our daily lives. And having places and safe places where we can focus on improving our physical and mental well-being is essential. That means Department of Recreation and Parks plays a vital role in addressing longstanding issues and finding solutions. The department exists to improve the health and wellness of Baltimore city residents and visitors. Wreckin Park attempts to do this and much more by operating numerous rec centers and managing a vast park system. To accomplish the goal of being the city's leading provider of affordable year-round leisure and recreational activities, that must be a plan. Today's hearing is intended to give Wreckin Parks an opportunity to present to the committee the status of this strategic plan, REC 2025, and to provide those relevant updates of its program, properties, and facilities. And with that, I would like to welcome Director Moore and ask him to introduce his team and proceed with his A's report.
Good morning, Chairman Stokes. Good morning, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Glover, Councilman Bullock. It's an honor and pleasure to be here this morning to talk about our strategic plan, where we as an agency see ourselves. Today, over the next couple of years, this was like five years strategic plan. On the call with me today, I have my Chief of Staff, Jessia Smith. I have my Deputy Directors of Recreation, Karen Jordan, my Deputy Director of Administration, Nicole Green. I have my Chief of Capital, Adam Borman, and I have Jerusalem Tiki, who's our strategic analyst, who is overseeing a great deal of the REC 2025 plan. What we want to do is to share a brief PowerPoint presentation. That presentation is going to be presented by Jessia Smith and Jerusalem together. But if we can, I think Jerusalem, you're gonna share the screen on the PowerPoint, is that correct? So what we want to do, Councilman Stokes, at this time, is we want to start the presentation. Jerusalem, if we'll go into presentation mode, we'll get started.
You can proceed.
Okay, sorry, hold on.
As you stated, Councilman Stokes, we're here today to give you all an update of where we are at REC 2025, which is our five-year strategic plan. But before we get started, and I turn it over to Chief of Staff, Smith, and Ms. Tiki, I want to just really highlight what we've done to this point in the first six months of the year. Next slide, Jerusalem. Just some quick highlights here is that Baltimore City Recreation and Parks is CAPRA certified. It's an accreditation program that every five years, we have to complete our reaccreditation to make sure that we're meeting the 155, 53 standards that has been set forth by National Wrecking Park Agency. One of the unique opportunities is that every agency in this country is not nationally accredited. It takes a lot to maintain this accreditation, but what it does is give us clear standards and goals that we should be accomplishing and meeting on a yearly basis. Overall, the measures of the agency's quality of operations, management, and the service to the community. And as I stated, this is something that we have to go through every five years. We just completed our accreditation back in September. And I will share with you all, out of 153 goals, our agency received a perfect score of 153. So we will continue to strive for excellence, but that is a great step in the right direction. A couple of the highlights quickly is just, as you all know, we have reopened in 2021 four rec centers. Bocheck, we opened a brand-new K Hill Fitness and Wellness Facility in partnership with Level 82 and the Ravens. We opened back up Hilton. And then we reopened Tuana Rec Center through renovations. And then we celebrated a green space down in the Harbor, Rashfield. So really excited of what we've accomplished in 2021. And we have several facilities that we envision coming back online in 2022 this year to include our Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Facility, which will be our second fitness and wellness facility, which is located in District 10 in the Cherry Hill Community. And then finally, I just want to quickly highlight our programming. One of the things that we as an agency, as part of our REC 2025 plan, is looking at how we expand our programming opportunities. And we have identified that all the programming opportunity doesn't necessarily have to come just within the agency. One of our big key focus areas right now is our STEM education, which is being ran internally by Rebecca, who's our STEM coordinator. We have five active STEM locations currently offered in the city. We also offer virtual programs for STEM. And what we did this past fall is we still continue to transition, is that we did offer virtual, but we did do some impersonal society programming at various rec centers. And then we was thankful for the funding that was allocated by Family. As we all know, our budget is strategically developed and designed in a way where a great deal of our budget is focused on personnel costs, but with partnership of Family, who was able to utilize that million dollars to really expand programming opportunities. And one of the unique ways is we touched our communities and we brought in different small business groups and organizations to help us offer unique programming this past summer as well as this fall. And then we just getting ready to kick off our winter and spring programming next week. So as you can see, some just quick brief highlights before we get into REC 2025. I'm really confident that our agency is moving in a direction that we continue to meet the items and the goals that you mentioned earlier, Councilman Stokes, in the beginning of your introduction about Wrecking Parks, making sure that we meet the needs and service of our community. So with that being said, what I want to do is share, is turn it over to Chief of Staff, Smith, who will tell us where we are with REC 2025.
Before you start, Director Moore, I want to acknowledge Councilman Torrance from the Seventh District, member of the committee.
Good morning, Councilman Torrance.
All right, so thank you, everybody.
Real quick, I'm sorry, real quick, if you're not speaking, could you please mute yourself? Thank you.
Absolutely. So one of the things that was very important when we first started this journey together, I joined Director Moore in the agency in 2018, is that Wreckin Parks have been an agency that had experienced a considerable amount of leadership turnover. So in an agency like that, there's a lot of starts and stops, right? So we inherited shelves full of master plans and different consulting firms had come in and looked at the state of the agency and made a myriad of recommendations, but there was no clear direction about what we were going to do with all this information. So as a starting point, we took a step back and decided that we needed, under Director Moore's leadership, needed to have a strategic plan about where we would be and how we would measure ourselves in the success of what we were doing under this leadership over the next five years. So with that came REC 2025. REC 2025 is the first strategic plan that the agency has had in over 20 years. And we started to do it in five years because you need some time to evaluate the organization and then to actually effectuate change, right? So we inherited a very overworked agency with a lot of pressure and a lot of pull of understanding how important recreation and parks was, but we needed to actually focus all of our efforts. So REC 2025 was our idea and plan to do that. One of the first things that was apparent to me is that there were voices that we heard from frequently and some voices we never heard from. So in planning for REC 2025, the very first tenant that was kind of guiding this process is that we wanted to engage the community. So we were very intentional about who we had on our steering committee and very intentional about how we planned to engage with the community. We wanted to hear from everybody, not only the people who had already had their strategic plan, their master plan for their park in place, but we wanted to make a very valid attempt to go out and talk to people, and we were able to accomplish just that, right? So we got over 900 surveys back. We had hundreds of people who actually participated in our town halls. Jerusalem, let's get to the next slide. So we took the time to actually take several months to engage the community through both surveys and actual town halls. And one thing that was very important and clear from me understanding Director Moore's vision is that we really wanted to hear from teams, right? So a lot of times, there are lots of adults who are making decisions and who are telling young people what it is they need and what's leading their needs. So we are very proud of our engagement with teens and this process and attention to hear from them as we wanted to look at four different things for REC 2025. Our culture, right? So we are a large employer, right? We have, we swing between 800 and over 1,000 employees at any time. So the culture and the environment that staff work in is important because they work with our young people, right? So we had to examine and re-energize our culture. We also had to re-engage our community. We had heard loud and clear that there were no clear channels on who to talk to when an issue or question came up about recreation and parks. So we need to be intentional about how we engage in our community. And also that the work that we've done, right? So recreation and parks as a profession has evolved over the last two or three decades, right? It's no longer a space where, you know, just retired basketball players come and work in the rec center, right? As I think Councilman Cohen will appreciate, our staff work with the city's most vulnerable people. We engaged with people in spaces and young people who are on a daily basis working through trauma, right? So that means that you need, and our staff need to be equipped to thrive in that space. So we had to take a step back and look at and evaluate the state of our employees and try to identify what skills they needed to kind of move us into 2025. And then lastly, our spaces, right? As we are competing with different organizations and private clubs, you know, it's time for us to take a real hard look at the state of our buildings, not just the buildings that our young people engage in, but the actual buildings that our staff show up at work every day, right? So one of those four things, our spaces, our communities, our people and our work. We met through these series of town halls to develop a five-year plan that is going to take us from where we were at the beginning of the plan, which was a very overworked, under-resourced, and in some spaces challenging to perform. And at the end of this, if we achieve all the goals, we will continue to strive to be the best Wreckin Parks organization in the entire country. What that will require from us is relentlessness on this plan. It will require us to be laser-focused on professional development for our team. It will require Director Moore to continue the amazing job to marshal resources for our organization. And for me as a Chief of Staff, and I like to call myself the Chief Strategy Officer, is to continue to remove barriers that prevent our staff and our team from performing. So we took out to do this plan, and from that plan, we developed those four tenants. And we have like five goals for each plan that we're attempting to accomplish each year. And at the end of this period, right, we will continue to be CAPRA certified. Our staff will have better defined roles and responsibilities and understand what we need and require for them as employees. They will be better equipped to work in trauma-informed spaces. Our centers will be updated and they will be more inviting. One thing that we learned relatively quickly is that most of our spaces are past their useful life, right? So we have an inventory of over 50 buildings, the majority of to which is not that inviting to young people or old people, right? Because the gift of Wreckin Parks is that we serve not only the youth, we are from the cradle to the grave, right? We have a very robust seniors program, an equally robust TR program, where we are reaching Baltimoreans in all levels of needs and skill sets. So, next slide, Jerusalem. We had to hear from everybody and we got that feedback. We got that feedback from the town halls and from the survey, and from there, we developed a plan. So on the next slide, we'll actually show you the journey that it took us to create the plan. And just want to highlight that this wasn't something that we concocted in the back room with 3,001 East Drive, right? We took our time to review what was on the shelves, the work that was already done to inform where we were going. We took some time to analyze our leadership team and understand what their individual goals and objectives were. And during the same time, I'd like to kind of highlight is that we had a complete turnover in our senior leadership team, right? So in this process, we had to reevaluate and reignite it. I think that goes to show that our expectations for forward movement and ingenuity don't only rest on our people in the rec centers. Our expectation as leaders that everyone in this entire organization will be bought in to REC 2025 and Director Moore's vision, and that our ultimate goal is that in five years, that everyone in this city will be able to speak undoubtedly that Recreation and Parks is a better organization, that is more organized, that is easy to engage with, and that is offering programming that is reflective of the citizens' needs. So we had our town hall meetings, we had our survey, we developed the plan, we published the plan on December 31st, right before COVID. So I just want to say that the interesting thing about this and the resiliency that I'm proud to be a leadership, a leader in this space is that in spite of it all, we have continued to persist with our strategic plan, right? COVID would have given us the great excuse to say, okay, hey, we got to stall the plan, right? There's too many things that's going on. Our team is becoming transformers. They're doing meal sites. They are doing student learning centers. But in spite of that all, and I want to be very thankful to the Wreckin Parks team and our leadership staff because we have continued to move forward with the plan and the urgency that we need to accomplish these goals to make sure that by 2025, we look remarkably different. So we launched in January of 2020, COVID hit in March in 2020, and we have still been able to move forward. I think this is my last slide because I'm going to turn over the mic to our very competent Jerusalem Tiki, who is the project lead for this function. She'll walk us through where we are in year two. Unless, Councilman, did you want to pause for questions right now, or you want us to go on?
No, I just want to recognize Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District, member of the committee.
Good morning, Councilwoman Porter.
And also, Councilman Stokes, I omit it and not on purpose. Jenny Morgan, who's our legislative liaison, is also on this call.
Now, Ms. Smith, you all can proceed.
All right, Jerusalem, are you ready? I do see a little caution, so I don't know if your video audio is just one.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So I'm going to do an overview of year two, although we're in year three. In here, I'll talk about the dashboard and how residents can access our progress.
All right, I think Jerusalem is... Jerusalem, you're having a little bit of technical difficulty.
If she take her camera down, maybe she can just...
So Jerusalem, try to take your camera off because we're getting really bad audio from you.
Screenshot of it. So at the top, you'll see icons that represent our different categories. And then you'll see the categories broken down underneath. So as a resident, if I just want to get a general overview of our progress, you can see pie charts underneath each photo. There, it'll tell you how much has been completed out of that section and how much is still pending. But say, I want to know more, right? I want to know a narrative of what's going on in a particular goal. There's two ways.
Jerusalem, before you go any further, I want to make sure everybody heard the beginning because you were, we was trying to transfer your language that was coming out. So to the committee members, did y'all, did you want to start over and let her just kind of go back from the beginning? I don't want anybody to miss anything.
Sure thing. Okay, so what I said in the beginning was, in an effort for us to be transparent throughout our process, we developed a dashboard that is available both in English and in Spanish, where residents can view our progress as we go along the journey. So to access the dashboard, you would be able to just type in myrec2025.com/dashboard. And to the right, you'll see a screenshot of the dashboard. From there, you will see icons at the top that represent our five categories. And then underneath it, you'll see those categories broken down with a pie chart underneath it. So the pie chart, if I just want to get a general overview of where we are in that category, I can see how much is completed and how much is pending. But say, I want to know more about a particular goal, or I am interested in a particular area. I can access that information by either clicking one of the icons at the top or clicking one of the photos that's underneath the category. So here's a screenshot of what one of the narrative sections look like. So say I click on our work. What you'll see at the very top is the last time that page was updated. You'll see the pie chart underneath it that you saw on the first screen. And then you'll see each goal broken out, and underneath each goal is an update on that section, which is updated on a monthly basis. So the theme for year two is building blocks because we're building on a foundation we set in year one. As Chief of Staff discussed, there's five at-large categories. So going left to right is our culture, our community, our work, our spaces. And then a special category below, looking back to move forward, that focuses on capital projects. Each goal has, or each category has five goals, with the exception of looking back to move forward, that has one goal. So in total, we're working with 21 goals a year. Each goal has a team comprised of staff who volunteered on their own basis to implement these goals. And they volunteered either based on their subject area of expertise or their professional interests. So next is just a general overview of where we are as of December. The percentages are reflective of the type of goals that we're working with this year. So in year two, there's a lot of work with external partners, whether they be across the city or in other jurisdictions. And also just naturally, some of these processes are multi-year processes. So even though they start in year two, they flow into year three. So the next several slides that I'm going to go over is just going to talk a little bit more about our progress and updated timelines for goals that haven't been completed as of yet. So first, we have one going. Under ongoing are four goals, growth and partnership base, acquiring new external funding, acquiring necessary for pilot multi-service facilities, then acquisition of funding for capital projects. And as you know, the funding base, which are multi-year processes, there is the base of the nation's infrastructure grants. And so these are ones that we're doing on a daily basis. So these are ongoing, yes.
You go ahead to start back over on that. You just...
Did I cut off for something?
No, you gotta go back to 16. We not, there's no translators on the phone. So we don't well know what you were saying because your phone, your internet was breaking up. So can you go back to slide 16?
Okay, thank you.
So it's the slide you was on, Jerusalem.
Oh, the slide just...
Yeah, is where you start having...
And try turning off your camera. Just turn off the camera thing.
So the slide you're on now is the slide. You start back at the beginning.
All right. Is this better?
Yes.
All right, I'm just sorry. So...
Jerusalem, Jerusalem, the same thing is happening again.
Jerusalem, I'm gonna take over because your audio is not coming in. So I'll talk my way through it. If you, if I say anything that's out of order, try and jump in if you can. So some of the ongoing goals that we have in year two is that we really wanted to focus on growing our partnership base. One of the things that's, you know, obvious to us is that we can't do this by ourselves.
Jerusalem, Jerusalem, your sound is sketchy, so Jakia is taking over because we can't understand absolutely nothing you're saying.
All right, Jerusalem. I'm gonna talk us through, if you could just advance the slides because your audio is coming in really, really bad. All right.
Slide 16, Jerusalem.
Go back to the previous slide. I got it. You would think we've been through two years into the pandemic that our technology would adapt to all of our needs, but it is being uncooperative today.
Can you hear me now? This is better?
If you could just share your screen and give me back the PowerPoint, I'll take it from here so that we can be respectful of everybody's time. If you're able to share your screen. If not, I can pull it up and share my screen. All right, let me try and grab...
Excuse me, Ms. Smith, did you want me to make you to present it so you can bring up the screen?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, give me one moment.
Go ahead.
All right, give me one second to put my little fingers on it, and thank you all for your flexibility. By now, we are masters at being flexible. All the way to the top.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Is Jerusalem trying to call me? All right, I'm gonna...
Hi, is this better now? I feel like maybe I need to switch rooms.
Can you just share your, if you share your screen again? I'm actually going to take it over. I got it.
And Ms. Smith, you're at the, you can bring it up. She can't, she no longer can bring this PowerPoint up.
All right, thank you so much. Let me come in one second. All right. We're good now?
Am I, can you hear me?
I can hear you, so you should put yourself on mute.
Yes, okay, so start over in ongoing, I think is where I was cutting off.
Yep, go ahead, Jerusalem.
All right, cool. So for ongoing, we had four goals. So growth and partnership base, acquiring new external funding, acquiring funding necessary for pilot multi-service facilities, and an acquisition of funding for capital projects. And most of these goals are funding-based and are multi-year processes, whether it's a donation, a sponsorship, or a grant process. So naturally, those are going to happen every year. Jessia, go ahead and go to the next slide. So for items completed in December of 2021, first is the two annual city-wide youth events. So in the beginning of 2021, we brought on nine high school youth that were to serve on our youth council, and they represent either a particular area of Baltimore where they live in or our set of regional sites or a set of special facilities. This past September, they held two events, the first being a self-care event at Carol Cook Recreation Center, and the second one at Patterson Park, which was a self-expression event. For their first two set of events, they had over 400 participants total, and they featured youth-owned businesses and vendors. One of their major goals was to highlight youth entrepreneurs in the city. Second, were to buy annual community forums with community and partners. So due to COVID, this goal kind of turned into a hybrid event. And our community engagement team engaged over 130 meetings and over 3,000 community members. Next is core programming structure. This team defined its programming seasons and also identified seven core areas of programming that defines how we plan the program at Wreckin Parks. And then finally, Wi-Fi in all BCRP spaces. One of our major goals through REC 2025 was to focus on access and this... And this particular goal focused on technological access. Our IT team identified gaps in our Wi-Fi access within all of our buildings, whether they be recreation centers, office buildings, or special facilities. And they worked with external vendors to ensure that Wi-Fi is accessible. So whenever a resident goes into one of our spaces, they're able to access the internet um, if need be. So here we have updated timelines for our other goals. So starting with goals that'll um, complete at the end of winter twenty-two, um, twenty-twenty-two are establish core competencies, clarify certifications and license requirements, BCRP cross-training programs, um, user-friendly procedural guides for BCRP divisions, a completed equity scorecard, and a comprehensive maintenance plan. And I just want to pull out one of them. So um, for one point nine, BCRP cross-training programs, we wanted to ensure that whether an employee has a piqued interest into another division or if they are looking to completely transition altogether and they're ready for that, we wanted to provide a mechanism to allow for that. So what this team has done so far has um, been working with the executive team to determine um, where the availability and needs are in their particular divisions, and then also surveyed our staff to identify what their interests are. And then um, to what extent, what their capacity is, because they'll be doing the cross-training program in addition to their daily duties. Um, so right now, we're building out the requirements. And once the requirements are built, we'll um, roll out our first cohort. Just see in a second, please. So next we have um, items that'll be complete as of spring of um, two thousand and two. Um, for these goals, we have uniform soft skill requirements for all BCRP staff, diverse hiring plan, enhanced internet with additional interactive features, resource to deploy public service requests, and a risk management strategy. So um, the one I want to pull out here is three point nine, enhanced internet with additional interactive features. Um, in year one, what we did was develop an internet, um, internet page with the help of BSIT. Um, our goal here, though, is to streamline how we communicate to our staff, both up to down and across the board. So um, we are now working with divisions to identify the information that, one, they can use so when they're planning their own events, we're not overlapping each other in terms of our divisions. Um, but also have resources for employees on the go. So if I want to know more about um, forestry, or if I want to know more about what we're doing in capital, I can go on the internet and find out that information easily as an employee. Just see a next slide. Just see a next slide, please. I don't think she can hear me.
We're on the slide that, that speaks about the summer, completion of summer twenty-twenty-two, which is the completion of our rebrand of BCRP. And one of the areas that we need to talk to, speak about this is that we're delaying on our uniform neighborhood scorecard. So can you highlight a reason why we're delaying there um, on that um, slide? And that, that will conclude the, the presentation. We can open it up for questions. But if you can talk, speak a little bit about the neighborhood scorecard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the um, presentation. So we are gonna go to committee member questions. Um, and I'm gonna start off with, my mother always said ladies up first. So I'm gonna start off with Councilwoman Porter from the Tiff District to see, see have any questions. Two questions per committee member. Councilwoman Porter? Councilwoman Porter? We'll, we'll come back to the Councilwoman. Um, Councilman Glover from the thirteenth district, you have any questions? Councilman Glover? Back to him. Uh, Councilman Bullock from the ninth district. Any questions?
So uh, good morning. No question. Just want to say I really do appreciate uh, the presentation and seeing how far uh, folks have come in terms of uh, voluntary recreation of parks. And then also uh, having a perfect score in all those standards is really impressive. So again, really appreciate your work thus far.
Uh, Councilman Cohen from the first district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Moore and team. Um, similar to my colleague, want to lift up some of the good work that you all have been doing. Um, really appreciate the collaboration from Jessia and Jenny and you, Director, and several of your staff. Um, and I'm also really looking forward to partnering with you all on the next phase of the Healing City Act. We have made sure that Rec and Park will be our second agency to fully train in trauma-informed care, and I'm looking forward to it. Um, my question is around staff attrition. I know that during this pandemic, pretty much every agency and organization, not just in Baltimore, but pretty much everywhere, has lost a lot of people. Folks are retiring, leaving to go to other uh, organization spaces. Um, and I think this has hit city government particularly hard. And I'm curious what it looks like for Rec and Park. Um, how many folks have we lost? How many folks have we gained? And then off of that question, what is our current strategy to recruit more, especially from within our city? Because these are good living wage, for the most part, jobs that we should be making sure are filled by Baltimoreans. I know many of them are. But was wondering if you could speak both to the level of attrition within staff, given the pandemic and everything else? And then also what we are doing to recruit internally from within the city?
Thank you, Coach. Councilman Cohen. Just see, I'll, I'll let you take the first question about the attrition piece, and then I can talk about the strategies that we're implementing.
Absolutely. Also, Councilman Cohen, you've lifted up a, a issue that we um, are seeing um, at a rate higher than I've ever seen in my professional career as an HR professional. Um, the challenge for us in this space is that um, we are losing our middle managers, right? So it's a very interesting dynamic because the market is hot. Everybody is losing everybody. Our, our neighboring jurisdictions are able to offer more pay for less responsibility. Uh, so we are, what I call internally, and everybody in my team will probably chuckle with their cameras off. We are in the middle of a human capital crisis. We have a couple of things happening at the same time. I talked a little bit, I touched on it earlier, that recreation of parks is, is a real profession, right? There are college degrees that align with it. There are national certifications that make one uh, properly suited to be in this space. So we have that one gap in some of our current uh, employees. They do an amazing job without those credentials, right? But as the field is continuing to change, and as society is putting more demands on our professionals, we need to tool them up, right? So we have that, that one place where we need to tool our internal staff up uh, to make sure they're well-equipped to, to perform. And then additionally, we have a, a salary compression issue. We have a, a wage issue with being able to um, engage talent. So what's really happening is we're doing the awesome job of being able to promote from within. But it's just creating a hole because we're not able to attract the backfield. So in one space, we are doing, we're doing amazing. I'm very proud of uh, the amount of internal promotions that have happened under Director Moore's leadership. I'm very proud of people who've been able to expand their career. Um, but I'm also equally saddened by the amount of new talent that comes in, stays for us for about a year and a half, and then goes off to greater places, right? Saying you work for Baltimore City is a resume booster. Uh, so we do have this natural pattern of a revolving door. Um, and then again, there are a lot of people who are choosing to retire, which again is, we lose that, that brain trust. But we also allow uh, newer professionals the opportunity to expand. So that's great. Um, but we are having, this is the slimmest staff that we've had. Um, because uh, we usually hold a bench, right? We have those people who come into work every single day. But there's also like another list of people we can call and say, hey, Zeke, uh, you know, we're down. Can you come in and work? That, that is basically evaporated, right? So we are uh, operating on a very slim um, staff. And then we're having a very hard time of attracting people. So we, we get good talent. We have a great and thriving interview process. And then when we get to the space where we start to talk about salary, professionals at this level that are required to do this level of care are, are not interested in making the salaries that we are currently able to offer. So um, we are still encouraged.
Could I, could I pause you right there? Just could you talk a little bit about what those salary ranges are?
Yep, I think Director Moore was gonna jump in here too, but I can just give you an example because I've been using it lately. Our fearless leader hails from Macon, Georgia, right? Which is outside of Atlanta, it's a small southern state. Their center directors in Macon, Georgia, make more money than my center directors in Baltimore City in the Northeast. So that's just a, a small, just, that's how far we are. So our center directors are averaging in the forties. Um, and just the, the level of uh, work that's required in that space. I mean, we've been working with our colleagues in DHR and the administration's been very supportive of trying to uncover ways that we can make some immediate change. But we are in a space where we're in a, we're in a human capital crisis. Um, we're being taxed and charged with doing very important work. Um, and we're in this, in this, in this equally difficult to pull people. Adam, for the same reasons, and his Capitals team, they are, they are building some of the best rec centers in the country. Um, you know, and we're city government, so you know, it's natural that we lag behind as it relates to salaries. Um, you know, it's just a, probably inappropriate time to look at some real things uh, in this space.
And I'll just jump in. Some of the things that we've been doing um, as a team, in our HR team, and is we, we're building strong relationships with our universities that surround us. We have Morgan State, you have Towson, and you also have Coppin, and all have sports management majors. Uh, one of the things we've been doing is meeting with those things to enhance our uh, internship program. Our, our team right now has posted internship opportunities uh, to various universities. And my last check, I think we had like twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four individuals that's already applied for some internships. So that's, that's one way we're trying to, to help as uh, the Chief of Staff was speaking of building this bench. Because she's right, we're, we're recruiting and, and the gap is not being filled on the outside. But we want to also continue to find ways to promote our staff. Another area that, that I just want to highlight internally has been our talent management program. Um, one of the things that we discovered early on and, and, and as part of Rec twenty-twenty-five is how do we better equip our team to be ready to move into these various positions? How we get rec leaders ready to be center directors, center directors ready to be um, district managers? And so this past year, we had a class of nine. And for, and I can say at this point in time, eight of those nine uh, individuals that graduated from our talent management program are now center directors in, in, in our agencies. And we're getting ready for our next group. So not only are we focused on internships, not only are we continuing to uh, advertise and promote in various areas like our National Rec and Park Association, our state agency, but we're also trying to build our internal candidates. But the Chief of Staff uh, did identify an area that we're seeing. Um, and our HR director has did a, a, a salary study that really even just in our, in our region alone. I'll give you an example, and administration has been really supportive to this. And we're, we're moving through the challenge to improve our lifeguard salary. Lifeguards in Baltimore City makes eleven fifty an hour. My surrounding county pays lifeguard sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour. So it's always been a challenge for us to recruit lifeguards. But we're addressing that issue now with DHR and our administrative support. So it's even small things like that where the community is saying, why can't our standards open? And what's going on with lifeguards is, there's a national shortage of lifeguards. But we as an agency have to position ourselves in a better position to compete with surrounding agencies for the same uh, type of work. So that's just some, some examples of that. Uh, but we're, we're continuing to work. But we are experiencing those shortcomings in staff. And hopefully that answers your questions, sir.
No, appreciate that. Um, like you said, Jocia, that really does sound like a human capital crisis. Um, whatever we can do to support, let us know. It, it's really concerning. Um, and I know it's not just you all, it's across the board. Um, just real quick, and maybe this is a request for the committee for another time, but would it be possible to send, if you have it off the top, great. But to send some numbers on how many folks we've gained and how many folks we've lost? I'd just be curious to actually get a sense of that, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Marley, yeah, we have that. Thanks, Councilman.
Great. Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
Real quick, I know um, Councilman Torrance has a hand up, but I, I just had two quick questions. Um, the strategic plan implementation began in twenty-twenty. How's Rec and Parks publicized their plan to the general public?
One, one of the things that we, we shared early on is that we do have a dashboard. We promote that in all of our social media channels. Uh, we're constantly updating this on our, our website, what we're encouraging our citizens. One of the things we committed to in the beginning as we rolled out this plan is we wanted, not only for us to understand where we are, but we want our residents to hold us accountable for our goals. And that's why we're mon- monthly, we update this dashboard. Uh, so we, we're connecting with our, our social media channels. Another area that we will uh, work to improve upon also is we now have, if you, you are recall when I first came in here, we didn't have a community engagement division. So we, we wouldn't even really connect with the community the way we should have. But we have since now, uh, we do have a community engagement team that's engaged a lot of different communities. And, and they should also be, should be promoting that website of where people can identify and track our, our work on Rec twenty-twenty-five. Those are, those are the areas that, that we, we're focused on now uh, and making sure.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Moore. The, the other question is, we must offer, you know, I've been talking to you about your, your Rec and Parks budget because most of your budget is for salaries. You know, and we had to partner with Cecil because the kids did very well um, at the summer camp. And Midway CDC, we were able to take them kids to an, you know, somewhere where they can really enjoy themselves, on the white marsh. The sponsor paid for the bus and the passes, and they went there. But when, when your, when your budget only calls for salaries, then we have rec centers, the kids almost never leave out the neighborhood. They don't get exposed to other things besides in the rec center. So um, I just said we must offer competitive salaries. And I encourage you, encourage to hear you are engaging with HR. I would like to share the salary study. Would you like to share the salary study with the, well, Zeke already said it, to help us understand the challenges? And, and again, I'm gonna go back because I did talk to the budget director, and we need to go back and revisit that because Jocia just said it. When we get that good talent like that, and they get that on their resume, they gone. You know, and you got some excellent rec directors right now. I don't see how long they gonna stay there. Because they gonna look at the salary compared to other jurisdictions outside of Baltimore City. And they gonna leave. And that's why, you know, I mean, this is happening everywhere. But we need to, um, I need to, and we need to as a committee to talk to administration also with you. But I still want to go back to talk to the budget director because we did have that conversation. He agreed to, to have that conversation with, with you, Director Moore. So also, so again, that's a request too, um, um, Marley. Uh, share the salary study with the committee to help understand the challenges. Um, thank you, uh, Councilman Cohen for that because that's, that's important. So those are my two questions. And then I'm gonna go to uh, Councilman Torrance who had his hand up. Thanks for being patient. Appreciate it.
You know, you're from East Baltimore, so I forgive you. Good morning. I know, you know, you know, we East Baltimore boys. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the committee, Director Moore, Chief of Staff Smith, uh, Ms. Tiki. I just want to say thank you, one, for this plan because it is something I look at every day, knowing that I have a few assets in my community from Drury Hill Park to Parkview to Lilian Jones. My question, because I know that I have, like my colleagues, great need for our young people and our seniors to get programming. What external sources of funding have you secured or looking to secure? How can the council help with that? Because we know that like, you have this plan, but this plan costs money. I'm pretty sure, like, I love how you put a dollar sign next to things like they cost. So the question is, how can we help you in securing that external funding? What funding are you looking for?
I think one, one thing I can say is that we're, we're all, we have our grants offices always looking for grant opportunities for our agency. Um, we do have the, the relationship and partnership, and we're thankful for the million dollars uh, from Family League that has really helped us to touch on what Councilman Stokes talked about earlier, improve programming opportunities uh, in, in, in our agency. And then we continuously are looking at other partners for collaboration. Because as the Chief of Staff talked about, is our culture's one piece, our community's another, but our spaces is a third. And where our planning department and administrations has really been generous to us to increase our capital. has really been generous to us to increase our capital budgets, there's always this continuous need to continue to find ways to partner with, you know, other people in the for-profit community that may be willing to help us improve facilities if it's an outdoor basketball court in some cases, or in the case what we did with the University of Maryland Medical System where they came in and donated the funding to improve Hall Park Rixon. And we was able to reopen that space. So we're always looking for the partners that can contribute in those ways. And if there's opportunities or organizations that you know that is looking at sponsorship opportunities and dollars, we would love to talk to them. And we would ask community, you know, if you have those, those opportunities or those communication connections, please don't forget about us and engages in those conversations.
Thank you, Director Moore. And my next question is still related to funding. The question I have, because I know that you guys are looking for external sources, have we looked to external sources to fund some of those highest needs in terms of talent pool, right? If we know that we need a team of people that's focused, super focused on a certain style of programming, or super focused on, case in point, I think that, case point, we think about trauma-informed care. Like, is there someone who's totally focused on that? Is there a way that we find, are we looking for grant opportunities to just support just that role? Or support the role where right now, I know that we, one of the things that I know from Lilian Jones is that there was a mentoring program there. There was an etiquette program there, like things that we know explicitly that build the esteem and esteem our children. I just want to make sure that that's something that we're looking at.
And I can start us, and I do have Nicole Green, who oversees our community engagement, then if you have something to add, Nicole. But, but yes, that is something that we, we give Felicia in our grants office, some clear directions of different target areas that we're looking at. And she's always looking for grant opportunities. She's looking for some of those partnerships. I will say that most of our solicitation at this current time, when it, when it comes to some of our business community members, have been more so on how you can partner with us to continue to improve some of our capital demands and requests. But we was, we have had a conversation with some of the vendors. We recently had a vendor who donated $100,000 to our agency for technology improvement. And so what we're going to do with that is continue to move forward. As you were talking about one of our goals about Wi-Fi, is that we got to continue to enhance our computer labs. Because right now, we know teams, they're big in the technology, but it's the way of the world now. And so if your facilities don't have the most updated technology or equipment, then that creates challenges as well beyond just the Wi-Fi. And then we're thankful for the mayor's announcement a couple of months ago about, you know, expanding fiber into our facilities, which is only going to be a win for us because we're pushing and moving forward our STEM education. And STEM education is completely centered around technology, right? And so having the fastest possible speeds connected to our facilities can only enhance what we're doing. So those are some of the things. But we have not, at this current time, targeted outside companies to fund some of our personnel strategy. Is there anything you want to add to that, Nicole? Or that was pretty accurate on that?
That was pretty accurate. One thing I will say, just to add a little bit, is that we're in a really great location where we oftentimes have people coming to us asking to do things. We recently had a company reach out to us about doing some activations in the park and looking at ways that they can not only do activities in the park, but provide some funding to get things done. So Felicia is working on that, and we welcome any additional support that you guys can give us.
Thank you. I yield back to the chair.
Councilwoman Porter? She must have got all, okay. I believe, Councilman Glover?
Yes, sir. I have no question.
You have any, you have no questions?
At the moment. Mr. Cook, excuse me, Mr. Moore, when you get a chance, can you check your email, the emails you about, I think, five days ago? So if you get a chance, please check that out for me, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the questions from the committee. Ms. Curran, do we have any call-ins? If we do, could you use the raise hand function, please? Anybody who want to testify, please use the raise hand function also. Do we have any?
We'll allow a minute, but currently there are no hands raised. If anyone would like to testify, and the attendees, please use a raise hand function or send me a quick chat. Thank you. None, Mr. Chair.
To the committee, Mr. Moore, I want to thank you for the presentation and 2025 plan is great, is long overdue. And I'm sure my colleagues, not just on the committee, but on the council, would really, you know, be impressed with what the plan is and how we move forward. Wreckin Parks to make sure we help implement the plan. But I just wanted to, as Councilman Torrance mentioned, playing with no funding is useless. As a council, we are here to advocate and push for sustainable funding to allow Wreckin Parks to reach the plan's ambitious goals. We're going to recess this hearing and ask Wreckin Parks to come back and provide updates periodically so we can track the progress. And again, I want to thank everybody for being on the call. Again, Wreckin Parks, you did a wonderful job, and my colleagues. And this hearing is in recess. Thank you. Have a great day, and everybody be safe.